So we're probably live on Westford Cat. Just giving Zoom a couple of minutes for them to get into the, from the waiting room.
What, Katherine?
They're all coming straight into the meeting.
Yes.
They're not stopping in the waiting room.
Because it's now you've opened it.
On your end? Okay. So, thank you, everybody, for joining us as we're back to public session after an executive session. This is the school committee meeting of Monday, September sixteenth. We are having a different Zoom format tonight as in just a one-off. It is a meeting format, so if you're watching us on there and you don't want to watch us on there, there's always Westford Cat YouTube channel for another option. And we are going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand if you're able.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the high of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Going to move on to the consent agenda. There was two sessions of meeting minutes. One of them was our committee retreat and the other was the first business meeting. There's four warrants and informational budget transfers and status of general funds. Any questions on the consent agenda? Motion to approve the consent agenda as outlined on the agenda.
So moved.
Thank you.
Seconded.
Thank you. All in favor? Great. Seven zero. Okay. We're going to move on to public comment. A reminder that public comment for any item or topic on or off the agenda is always available near the top of the agenda for individuals to share their thoughts. Speakers will be limited to two minutes per person. Please use public comment even if you refer to something later on the agenda. Virtual public comment is available through Zoom. Raise your hand and you'll be promoted to panelists and unmuted or in person at the microphone at the chair. Do you have a minute to, anyone on Zoom? Anyone in the? Any hands?
No. I don't, nobody else.
Okay. Great. We're out of time. Ash, yep. Okay, we're going to move on to informational updates and we'll start with the superintendent.
Thank you. In this evening's meeting packet, I've included the Valley Collaborative's quarter four report. One of the things that they've started doing, we started this last spring, is that as they shared their quarter, their financial reports with us, as we are a member district for Valley Collaborative, they've asked that we then include that in a packet specifically. So we would share it with the school committee this way. It's in a packet and I'll address it in my update so that we'll have it in the meeting minutes that it was shared. It's something that you can certainly review. It's there for you to look at. One of the things that we talked about last year in not, one of the reasons why we don't go through it necessarily during a business meeting is because it could become very confusing for people because it's not our financial information.
Right.
So if you have any questions about it at any given time, you can certainly reach out to me. If you remember, you appoint me every year to be a member of the board of Valley Collaborative as with all the other districts that were part of that. So we'll put that in there. We'll put, when they have newsletters, I'll put that in the packet and point your attention to that as well, too.
Great.
The weather's been phenomenal and so it's been fantastic to see people enjoying getting outside as opposed to last year. It was a little unbearable at the beginning of school. And so it's been nice. I know a lot of the different drills and things that people have been happening, having this just at the beginning of the school year, kids are, you know, little less eager to go back into the building as they're enjoying the sunshine, a little bit of extra, extra time out there. You all saw that last week we sent out that information. The Board of Health voted to decide to go ahead and spray our fields. So they did that Thursday night. I have not heard any concerns from that whatsoever. That was just a proactive thing that they were looking to do. And so we just shared that information as, as part of our requirements if we used certain pesticides on school grounds. And then, did you want to share about the?
Sure. Westford Academy has been recognized as a unified champion school. And this has been a head nod to Westford Academy starting a unified track team last year as well as the commitment this year to expanding to unified basketball. This has been a strong commitment from, for both Principal Toomey and Jeff Bunyan, our athletic director, and so we thank them very much for those efforts.
Thanks. That's great news. I'll move on to school committee updates. Go ahead, Tom.
Just one really. Graduation requirements working group has kicked off at the academy. I was invited to join that. It's made up of admin, staff, parents, and students, meeting every other week for just about an hour, trying to really keep it to that. And I believe the goal is to have a presentation here in November, December timeframe.
Okay. Bill?
The school start time subcommittee met on Friday, September sixth. Catherine and I were present along with Dr. Chu and members of D-Bus. We recapped the Trans Finder efficiency study that was compiled last year. We had talked about from that report, one viable scenario that was identified. Kept a similar number of buses on the, on the roads while, while helping to push those high school and middle school start times later would require a two-tier system of transportation. So the high schools and middle schools together and then all of our elementary schools combined. We had a good discussion about some of the history of transportation changes in the district. We talked about, you know, adhering to the current school day lengths for full days and early release days per structured learning time requirements in the state. Talked about route maps, overlaps, walk to stop guidelines, and some of the pressures that D-Bus faces with parents and riders. So with our contract, we have the software now and Jen Piper, our transportation director, is going to run with our ridership data from school year twenty-four, twenty-five, a preliminary efficiency comparison to see how we kind of stack with that from what Trans Finder told us last year. So obviously more discussions to come. We want to get into some of our discussions with stakeholders in the community around the district and others that would be potentially affected by, you know, a later high school and middle school start, which is the goal we're hoping for. So more to come.
Any others down the line? School committee updates? Okay, I'll just add that finance subcommittee also met last week. We, policy. Finance met and reviewed a working draft of that revolving funds sort of guideline manual. We're still working on the best words to use to describe all this. We don't think it falls into the necessarily, the, the current working draft doesn't necessarily fall into a policy because then we'd have to update it through the, the three-meeting process every time we wanted to change amounts and stuff. So the current consensus is to have like a working copy with amounts and recommended that, that level of detail, but then sort of a higher overarching policy that would reference a document that gets into the weeds, kind of like how we did student activity accounts, like that there's separate guidelines. So we'll keep working on that and then we'll bring it to the full committee soon for feedback. And then maybe that ties into a future tri board meeting for the community. Yeah? Just thinking of an ad. Yeah.
So Laurie has joined the policy team and Sean is sticking with us. And we kind of just reviewed again where we were last year. We were very excited that the finance committee was kind of shouldering the fiscal policy review for the start of the year after our last go-out. And we're actually starting the year reviewing the warrant policy. I don't have the number of it to hand. Just having a look at what best practices are. It's a policy that hasn't been reviewed in a while. So we'll be meeting again in two weeks' time to review kind of what other districts are doing, what MASC model policy is suggesting, and we will come back if we have any updates.
Thanks. We'll move on to student updates and we will welcome our new student representatives to the school committee, Daniel Wang and Maddie Coria. Sorry. Coria, thank you. Both seniors and one representing student council and one representing the student advisory council. So please introduce yourselves and, or speak to your updates.
Hi.
Glad to have you.
I'm Daniel. So just a few updates. So WA Athletics is off to a great start with many teams winning their initial games. WA recently implemented a new phone policy in which phones are no longer allowed to be used during class, but they are allowed to be used during lunch block or during passing time. And many teachers, they choose to use what's called like a phone jail where students basically put their phone in like a little, like a little, yeah, a little shoe holder on the wall. And then in addition, a group of Spanish exchange students recently came to WA where they were involved in a bunch of activities within WA and outside, and they just headed back to Spain today.
Awesome. Thank you.
And I'm Maddie. And then I'll add to the addition to that, we also, we're definitely into the swing of school. I know a lot, I hear from a lot of people that, you know, assessments are up and running, homework is very much a thing. Summer is a thing of the past at this moment. And we also have freshman elections happening at the end of September, beginning of October. So I feel like for a lot of people, especially in student government, that kind of like ends the beginning of our school year. So it's exciting.
And we'll get a new stack member from there.
We will, yeah.
Actually, that's another update, right? Is that stack met for the first time today?
Yep, yeah, we have our first meeting.
Thank you, Laurie and Catherine. Awesome. Thank you. Okay, great. Thank you. We're going to move on to the first order of business, which is a remind, a recurring one from the last meeting to talk about the renaming of the Westford Academy press box.
Yeah, great. And we do have some guests with us.
Yes.
Bring them up.
Yep. So if they're, if you're on Zoom and you're here for this agenda item, please raise your hands and you can be added.
And we have some folks with us, too.
Feel free to come up to the table and, with the microphone. Otherwise, the, otherwise the video at home won't catch your, your answers.
Thank you.
Sean, you want to just give us a quick reminder?
Sure, sure, sure. So to bring us all up to speed and especially for the benefit of those who didn't watch our meeting last, meeting a few weeks ago. All right. So in beginning of 2024, we received a letter from, well, the school committee received a letter from the several administrators, present and past at Westford Academy, asking us to consider naming the press box, which is a smaller part of Westford Academy. The trustees field overlooks the field, to consider naming that press box after a former full-time dean and special education teacher and current Westford Academy baseball coach. That individual's name is Mr. Michael Parent. So we received that pursuant to the policy. We had to form a naming committee, which is supposed to be comprised of individuals that are not part of the school committee. I chaired that committee. We had several representatives on it. We had a student representative. We had a former Westford Academy administrative assistant. We had a current Westford Academy staff member and then a current student or who had actually just graduated. So that committee met. Now, the, the rub to this, which is probably more appropriate for the next time that we meet, is the school committee policy on the matter seven-two-one-one, the way that it's written, requires that any name that is approved by a naming committee to be considered at annual town meeting. And the way that the language of the policy is currently written, it speaks to spaces including but not limited to school buildings, athletic facilities, and open spaces. I will say, this is our first time that we've convened the naming committee since this policy was instituted in 2022. And one of the concerns that our policy committee had discussed was that this may not have been the intent of it, that the intent may have been to focus on larger spaces and not necessarily something that is the size of a press box. All right. That's the history of how we got here. The naming committee, subcommittee of the policy committee met back in June and considered whether or not to recommend to the school committee to suspend policy seven-two-one-one and also whether or not Mr. Parent is, in his contributions to Westford Academy and to the Westford Public Schools, whether or not he meets the very high standard that is imposed by seven-two-one-one, which is that this be someone who has made an outstanding contribution to education, humanity, or the community, or have displayed outstanding leadership, or be a person of historical significance. So that's essentially how we got here. I know we discussed this at our last meeting and we anticipate a vote on it at our next meeting. The purpose of this meeting was that we have our wonderful volunteers who sat on the naming subcommittee with myself and dedicated a couple nights with us to discuss this and to relay some information to our school committee and hopefully that us seven can make an informed decision as to whether or not we move forward on suspending this policy and then naming this, I would characterize as small section of Westford Academy trustees field after this particular individual. Okay. With us tonight, we have Kathy Hablondi, who was a administrative assistant for Westford Academy for many years. We have Mr. Michael Canata, who's also with us, who was a alumni and student.
Just want to interrupt, Sean. If, if anyone joined, because we're a little ahead of schedule from the meeting agenda. So if anyone joined in the last few minutes on Zoom that is part of the naming committee and would like to sort of join the Zoom meeting and have your screen up, just raise your hand.
Yeah, I can.
And we'll add, add that so that they can speak and join in.
They can speak anyway, they just have to unmute.
Okay.
Okay.
Sorry, go ahead.
So maybe we'll address our members who are with us first.
Yep.
Again, if you guys want to introduce yourself and tell your connection to Westford Public Schools, once more, it would be helpful. And maybe in a few words, tell us what, what your thoughts were and kind of the things that we discussed at the naming committee, that would be really helpful.
So I'm Michael Canata. I graduated from WA in two thousand. It's been over twenty years since I was a football player and student of Mr. Parent. Looking back at my time at WA, Mr. Parent was one of the teachers that made it such a great experience. Mr. Parent wasn't a traditional teacher. He was a history, he wasn't a history or math teacher, but he taught us all about being better people and preparing us for the real world. And he did that better than anyone. He expected us to do the right thing. He held us accountable. He taught us how to prepare, work hard, and he never let us make excuses. Mr. Parent was a role model. The way he conducted himself was, set himself apart from all the other teachers. As demanding of us as he was, he did so in a kind and lighthearted way. No matter what you had going on or how stressed you were, with a single comment or a wink, he could put a smile on your face and put you at ease. Whether you're in high school or in the real world, this is, these are qualities that I think separate you from others and qualities that I try to emulate today. Mr. Parent's service to the community of over thirty years, I think deserves some, some, of, some form of recognition from the town and naming of the press box, I think would be a great gesture.
That's Mike.
Thanks.
Thank you.
And I'm Kathy Hablondi. I did work for my, I kind of, my kids both played sports for him, so I kind of saw the sports end of it and the high school end of it. But then when I went to the high school myself, I, I saw him as a person, not just as a teacher and I didn't know him as a teacher, but as an administrator. As a parent, watching him with my children, one played softball for him, one played football for him. I think, as I said to Sean, that I think they would rather disappoint me than ever disappoint that man. Really, really cared for him and he was very, very good with all students, as I saw when I started working with them. He took the time when there was discipline and they left the room with a smile. They knew they were in trouble, but they got, he got his message across. And like he said, he just could do it in such a way that the kids knew what to do, but they knew they better not do it again. And so the hint, I'm just looking at my notes.
Take your time.
They, my, my kids both had graduated when I started working for him. He, he had a way with the kids when they were, you know, he was having lunch duty. All of a sudden, I'd have a student come to my desk and they'd just look at me and they'd say, Johnny. I'd say, yeah? What's that for? It was a code word that I had to know that he had given the kid, that this child didn't have money for lunch and I could go into his drawer and take money. I mean, he was just very giving to every child, every student that came through his office. And he, he just, he was a wonderful, he's a wonderful man and he takes the time with every student. He knows their names, like, no, twenty years later, he still, still knew my house phone number. I don't know how he knew that. You know, he'd call Johnny maybe once a week or something for football and he still remembered our telephone number. And that's just, I'm sure he remembered yours, too. But he is, he is a very special man and I really do think something should be done for him, as, as nice as he is and he could, he's sneaky, too. He's very funny.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Sean, I have Jim Antonelli and Ryan Swinnamore.
Uh, yeah, I think it probably makes sense to hear from Ryan first because he was sitting on the naming committee.
Okay. Ryan, if you'd like to add anything to the discussion, I think you just unmuted yourself.
Yeah, hello, everybody. I'm Ryan Swinnamore. I just graduated from, from Westford Academy in 2024. I, I never really had Mr. Parent in school, but he still had a big impact in my life over the last four years, just from baseball alone. And, you know, it's funny that we have this meeting today. I, I think a few days ago, he just sent me a text and was checking on me, making sure I was doing okay at college. So, I mean, even still, now that I'm not necessarily with him on the baseball team, he still cares and, and that just shows really the, the character that he is. He instills his work ethic on his players, at least in my opinion. He was at the baseball field, even if we had a four PM game, he was at the baseball field by eleven o'clock. And I, I'd peek out the, the science window and see him pacing around. He always had a game plan. He was very dedicated to his players, cared a lot, cared a lot about the community. We did a lot of, you know, community service projects with the, with the youth hosting baseball clinics. And, and as you said, I, I've only had him, you know, for the past four years of my life, but he still made a, a big impact and he's still influencing me in, in school. I, I had an essay the other day. I based it around his mantra of team over self. You know, that was a big thing that he preached this past four years. No one's bigger than the team. The team is the most important and he instilled a lot of good qualities in us baseball players over the past four years.
Thanks, Ryan.
And I know our former WA principal, I, I will say, just for some context, Mr. Antonelli is one of the signatories to the, the letter that we received.
The submission.
Yeah. So I think it would be appropriate to hear from Mr. Antonelli if we can pull him up.
Yeah, he's on, he's, should be able to chat away there.
Okay.
Can you hear us?
Ready to go?
There we go. Yeah.
You hear me okay?
Yep. Can I pin him? Does that put him on? I think it says remove spotlight in the top corner.
We're, we're good to go?
Okay. Yep, go ahead. We can hear you.
Thank you.
Okay. Just want to double check. Well, thank you very much for having me this evening. And Michael and Ryan and Kathy, your words were, were spot on. So thank you for being there tonight to speak on behalf of Mr. Parent. My first recollection of Mike Parent was when he came on the football field when I was a student back in the nineteen eighties. And he actually took the time to drive this guy out to Springfield College when I was a junior in high school, trying to figure out what my next steps were. My parents couldn't take the time off of work and so Mike, Mr. Parent drove me out to Springfield College where I had an interview with Springfield. Didn't end up participating in sports in Springfield, went to UMass Lowell, but I can still remember that day fondly, him driving out there and actually taking me to lunch that day and just really supporting me through, you know, my next path as I headed on to college. So Mike and I, you know, worked together for so many years. We were both deans of students at Westford Academy. We coached multiple sports together. We recently, most recently, took over the baseball program together and Mike is still there after so many years of making his commitment to Westford Academy. He's a true gray ghost, even though sometimes he'll say he's a, he's a true midi, Drake at midi. He's really a, a gray ghost through and through. In fact, he gave me a little bit of hell tonight for wearing my Newburyport athletic shirt. So he's, he's a guy that has made a tremendous impact on so many students throughout his career. And I think that this opportunity for us to provide him a piece of his legacy by putting the name on the press box, just says something about how much he means to the community of Westford, the students of Westford, and me personally, as he's been a mentor, a friend, a confidant, and somebody that I respect and wanted to emulate throughout my life. And so I think this is a great opportunity for the naming committee to present something to the school committee and I hope that you will support this and we can, we can get that name on the board. So as people enter Alumni Stadium and Trustees Field, which is a beautiful place for, for student athletes to participate in, for spectators to see, they'll see that name up there, which means a lot to the community of Westford. So I want to thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. I hope that this is a positive outcome on behalf of Mr. Mike Parent, because I think he's most deserving.
Thank you.
Great. Anyone else?
Uh, no, I don't have anybody else.
I think that's it. Mr. Toomey, I know you, you're joining us now and you are one of the, the names on, on the letter. Is that okay?
Sure.
Okay.
Good evening. Dan Toomey, principal of Westford Academy. I think to summarize without being redundant of what's said, the best way to give you an example of Mr. Parent as a dean would be to have gone back in time and visited his office. And in his office was pictures of hundreds and hundreds of students on the walls from the time when he started as, as a special educator, all the way up and through his last year of school, where he had pictures of students in celebratory and different types of things, classrooms and activities. And he had a name and a story with just about all those pictures on the wall. And when I had the opportunity to be hired as dean of students to replace Mr. Parent, he, he shared some of those stories with me. And it just goes to show you that it was the effort and the heart of everything that he did, especially during a time where Westford Academy grew from a school of eight hundred students to seventeen hundred students and becoming a well-known, you know, a well-known and a highly respected institution of education. Mike Parent had, had a big part of that.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. So Bella, that's all that I have for a presentation. Should we talk about where?
Yeah, so I'm sure the committee remembers from last meeting, but we have basically two decisions ahead of us that are not for tonight, but for the thirtieth, but it would be great to continue discussion, which is, is this person, the, are, are we following, approving the submission to name this piece of the school after Mr. Michael Parent? And the logistics of that and the process of that, according to our current policy, requires a town meeting vote. So we would have to decide as a committee what the next step is there.
Right. And I will say, the naming committee, we've done our best to comply with every aspect of the policy. It's lengthy, if anyone wants to look at it, seven-two-one-one. The, there's been a memorandum posted along with the minutes of the naming committee's suggestion and recommendation to us as a board, and that has been posted on the town's website since, I believe, July.
Our, our school website.
Okay, school website. I apologize.
That's okay. So if you go to about WPS on the school district website and then click School Committee, on the right-hand side is our News and Announcements and we have, as Sean said, the whole packet that's in, the whole document that's in tonight's packet, which has the original submission, the policy, and the minutes from the naming committee, as well as a Google Doc. So a Google form, like an open survey. So if you know of somebody who was, who knew you were coming tonight or knew we were discussing this and voting on this on September thirtieth and wants to contribute. and wants to, um, contribute their own personal words, um, that is the cur- uh, easiest way to, to do that. So, it's on the district website under About W P S and then under School Committee.
And maybe we'll attach those, um, comments to the next meeting's
Yep.
agenda.
Yep.
Okay.
So, um, we have gotten two submissions so far. Uh, one was a personal story in favor of, um, in support of Mr. Parent. And one was just a question about the process. I can't remember the wording of it, but I will share that with the committee too, so that you can think about those. Even if we get any other, yeah.
I'm, I'm just kind of curious on the, um, the town meeting component of it. Um, I think, Tom, you kind of raised it a little bit. I know we had discussed it in policy last year, but I kind of feel when you kind of threw it up there again, it, it's had me thinking this last week or two. Um, so I kind of just be curious as to, uh, you know, people's thoughts on, on the press box and having to do, I mean, I can see both sides on, on it. That's my thought on it. It's not a, a, a permanent school building, um, but I do see that there's some permanency to like a press box via, as opposed to like a bench or, so I don't know if anybody had any thoughts, if I'm allowed to list that.
Um, two things for me for that. So, I've actually been at a couple of town meetings when naming has come up. And I actually see it as a, it, it's generally overwhelming support, right? And I actually think that's a big affirmation to have, you know, especially if it were an attendance like we've, we've had, you know, the past couple, you know, the, over a thousand people vote yay and very public thing. Um, and then my other piece of it, so, so I, I am fully behind the naming piece. Um, I'm a little bit concerned about the precedent of, um, suspending a policy. I think if, if we as a committee feel that the policy is too strict, then I think maybe the policy itself needs to be, be addressed. But, um, yeah, I just, I have a hard time suspending one policy. And then what happens when we run to a case where something else happens? And do we keep suspending policies or, you know, so that, that's more of where I'm coming from. It's not anything being opposed to the naming itself, uh, you know, it's just, it, it, I think if we have a clear policy, it should be followed.
I'm just very mindful of our town meeting agendas and I know they've worked really hard on what goes on there. And just conscious of time, you know, people's time with, so. I mean, I don't know, is it something that we should have our town moderator give her two cents on something like this or is it completely up to us?
Well, certainly we can. And, and I will say that, uh, it wasn't me, it was, uh, a former school committee, Chris Sanders, who spoke with our town moderator, at, at least regarding the, the component as to whether or not this would even be appropriate for fall town meeting. And there was a resounding no.
Yeah.
Um, so i- if this is going to a town meeting, it would be in March, right? Yeah. Um, so that's the first part. Um, I, I will say, and I can speak as someone who was in the room and who was chairing the naming committee on the, the nights that we met. And I, I think the consensus was, well, yeah, that, that point was raised. However, i- if the will of the school committee, that in making, it, I guess that was considered that, the slippery slope argument as to that, um, you know, well, if we do it now, it's just going to be a flood of things like that. And, and I think the, the consensus that the group came through was, well, if you're going to suspend it now, you should also in tandem have the policy subcommittee be looking at this as to, hey, really, what's the will of the school committee here? Is this, was this the intended, um, purpose of this, right?
I think that's how I hear it too, is that, is this a fluke? That we're going to adjust the policy moving forward so that if, uh, something similar to the press box came back, we treat it the same? Or is this like a anomaly that we're treating differently? That would worry me, right? And I would, I would say in however many years I've been on the committee, we, I can think of maybe once or twice that we've ever suspended policy. So, it is definitely not something we take lightly. Um, but I think the process that we've done to lead up to this point, I feel pretty confident in. Like the, the number of meetings we're talking about it, the naming committee, the documentation we're showing, the open to the community form. Those things make me feel good about saying this, this fits within these bounds. Any other reactions from the committee? Do you want to come up to the mic?
Oh, me?
Like, it's just the lights right in mine.
Oh.
Can we add this?
I have a, I have a question about the timeliness of it. So, it's like, if, if we're, we would be putting it off to town meeting, it would be in March, which is like six months out. Is there a reason to do it sooner than March? Or is the question on the table that we don't want it to have to go to town meeting?
It's whether or not it would go to town meeting at all. I don't think, I, I believe my understanding is anything that goes on the fall town meeting, the special town meeting has to come under, like,
Very specific.
No, no, I understand. So, my question is like, so the question on the table isn't that, that March is too far out. It's just as to whether or not we should go to town meeting.
That's how I view it, but I think we're all open to opinions.
I mean, I think the fact that this is the first time we've actually used the policy, it's obviously showing up some, you know, potential places for review. If, if it was something that we had used before and now we're talking about suspending it, you know, I would feel maybe a little bit uncomfortable. But the fact that on the first kind of time out the gate, we're actually realizing, oh, hang on, was this actually the intention of the policy, as you said, um. Right, so, you know, it's, it's possible it's supposed to consider suspending it more so in order for a policy committee to actually review us appropriately and potentially make the changes.
Do we have any notes? Um, I know when you guys open up a policy for, for review, a lot of what you do is look at like M A S C, best practice or other districts.
Mm-hmm.
Do you know when this came up in the spring, if, if any of that was looked at? To see how other, um, what, what bar other districts use to say this needs a larger vote? And this could be something.
I, I don't think we had in one sense because it was such a recent, recently, um, updated policy.
Okay.
Um, and have been worked on. Um, not that it could dr- it comes to mind.
Would something like that help sway, helping, um, convince other committee members? Or they're interested in seeing how other districts do this? Or, I guess what I'm looking for is when this should come back to a next meeting, what information we need to get the committee in order to f- make a decision.
I'm just going into the full direction. I just, out of curiosity, we've nothing. Typically, if we find information, that's, uh,
It's stored.
pertaining, we kind of stored with it, but we have, we have no notes connected with it.
Yep.
Um.
Well, from the original, from our, the last time we talked about this at the last meeting, um, my understanding of the consensus was that we would have this meeting with the naming committee to sort of speak, um, authentically from their own voice about it. And that we thought that that might be enough time that our, the Google form was open in the public. And, um, that we would be able to revisit this after that, after this meeting.
I guess, I, I want to, I want to say something, um, because so often, so I'm a child advocate and so often I get to only hear sad stories about kids because of my day job. And so, hearing these stories today has been incredibly heartening and it's very inspiring. And I appreciate you taking the time to come here and tell them. Um, because I think it's such an important part to remember about all of the bright spots that happen during the day, especially at a high school, where sometimes they're, it's a tough, it's a tough, it's a tough crowd. Um, so I, I hope that no one takes this conversation to be the, to take anything away from the person who's being honored. I think that we're having a conversation because this policy, um, happened in a context. And so, we want to think about that context. But we absolutely, um, I think are all in agreement that this person is a very worthy person. And it's just about how, what is the right way to, to go about the process? Um, so I just want to make sure that that is said loud and clear.
Thanks, Mari.
Um, because I don't think there's any question that this person is worthy. I think it's just about making sure that it goes forward in a way that, um, no one can cast any doubt.
Thank you.
Right? Um, and, and take some shine off of it. Because that could be something that could happen and we wouldn't want that to happen at all. So, I just wanted to say that aloud.
No, thank you for saying that.
Well said.
Yep. What is the pleasure of the committee? Is there a length of time we want the form to be open and publicized? If it was mentioned at the last meeting, is there information that we want to collect?
We're saying, we're going to vote on the next, we potentially are voting on the next meeting.
That was my understanding from the last meeting when we sat down to write this agenda, but it's obviously, I'm one of seven.
I mean, we've had two, two submissions.
In the Google form?
In the Google form. Yep.
Just as another point of reference, I pulled up the, uh, M A S C, uh, online policy database, the hub. And I could probably look at about twenty to thirty different school districts with sort of naming policies. And maybe it's worthy of the committee to look at, take a gander at some of those and see how those are named.
Okay. What authority they give themselves versus an external body?
Kind of lend some more insight to this context.
But the question is, is, are we doing that just with the policy focus? Or are we doing it with this specific, it's, it's kind of like the chicken and the egg. Are we doing the policy on the?
So, I mean, in one case, on one hand, if this is proven to, that the policy has a defect, right? Yes, the, the policy needs to be adjusted. But on the other hand, the policy was approved theoretically after public comment and, and whatnot. And none of that came to light at that time.
I did, I remember voting on it and I think, Tom, the reason it kind of didn't come to light was, I think as we were reading it, we all had visions of a school building in our head. And it was really only as we were reading through the policy, there was like one line, almost like one word, that kind of shifted the entire thing, which sometimes when you're approving a policy, you're not thinking of a bench or,
Right, no, no, and I'm not, I'm not putting any fault on the, the approval process.
Yeah.
I'm just, uh, concerned that it went through a process and to, you know.
I, I think at the same time, when this came up initially, I, I think a number of people were surprised that this would be the process that this would go through, right? So, that's where it takes me back to the policy itself. And I think Mari did a great job kind of spelling that out, right? Because it's like, this isn't about like a rush to get something done. But it is like, is this something that the school committee wants to bring to town meeting?
Yeah.
And I don't necessarily think that that's a good idea. I think it's, I think this person is worthy. I think this is something that I would like to see the school committee support. But I will say, I would, I would be more concerned about bringing this specific question to town meeting, knowing that we're going to have budget conversations, knowing that we're going to be talking about other things that I feel like it could get lost. And to Mari's point, all of a sudden, this thing that was supposed to be a really nice way of honoring an individual now becomes, I will say politicized in some way, which isn't what I think the intent of the policy is either. So, I would encourage you to look at the policy and say, okay, well, what, what is that that happened? And it, does this fall in there? Should this be part of that, that criteria or not? Or is this something that is different that the school committee should just be able to make a decision on?
It, would it help if, because we know eve- one way or the other, if we ended up having to go to, if the decision was to go to town meeting and to follow the policy as, as is, it's not going on the October, um, warrant. So, it buys us time. So, would it be helpful if we kind of paused on the vote and gave policy, um, you know, a couple of weeks to review our policy first? Get some other information from other districts and do our policy first and then come back and take the vote?
So, it's, so Catherine's, so if I,
Sorry.
Not to say the word policy is seventeen times wrong, but what I think I hear you saying is that we could revise the policy first.
Yeah.
And then bring it back, which would still be before town meeting.
Yeah.
Which would probably be better than suspending a policy.
And there's no rush, Sean. There's no reason for this to happen sooner rather than later.
Yeah, I, I, I don't think any, uh, I don't think that any reason to rush has been articulated to us at least. Yeah, so. I think that makes sense. Or if, if we are going to suspend a policy, at least have, you know, a draft as to what the policy committee is going to suggest to our, uh, to the school committee at some point. I think that makes sense. So, it's not like, right?
For me, this is like a test of reasonableness. And I think our process is in place. I think we're admitting that the policy needs to go through a review. But I also, I guess, just don't see a reason to hold that up when we've gone through the other steps and sort of checked those boxes and say, let me use the test of reasonableness, this makes sense. And also, we will review the policy this year and ha- put, put a high priority on that. Um, I think as long as we're admitting that and in the suspension of the policy, we've mentioned that, I'm comfortable with that as one of seven.
I think suspending a policy is a slippery slope. If we're going to change it, we should just change it. I'm kind of with Tom on that.
So, maybe what makes sense is, when is the policy committee's next meeting?
Um, September twenty-fifth.
Okay.
That'll, yeah.
That is before our meeting on the thirtieth. And that would give us an opportunity to inform this group as to, uh, whether or not, how that discussion went. And then we could inform this group on the thirtieth. Um, and depending on how that conversation goes, uh, decide where, where this is going, right? Because if, if our report is, is that the policy committee is going to recommend that, uh, you know, this essentially just gets amended, then it's just a matter of time, right? And we're bringing the same recommendation back, except it's coming, what, two weeks plus wave of public reading? So, what, three weeks?
It's usually three meetings.
Three meetings.
For a policy.
Three meetings, okay, so.
Which is six weeks.
Which just prolongs things, but certainly before town meeting, so. Yeah, 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 so.
So, I think we could also decouple them. I, I'd be ready to vote a committee recommendation in support of the, the naming portion.
Yeah.
Right? I'd be certainly ready for that vote at the next meeting. Uh, and then, you know, if the process changes between that and town meeting,
I got you.
It, you know, then, then it changes.
Yeah.
Right? But that also puts the recommendation in place for whenever select board is starting to craft the warrant, if, if that's how long it drags out, that it's already there, we don't have to. And it almost, it, it feels to me a little bit better in having them separated as opposed, and then it's re- we're reviewing the policy. Yes, we know it's still, because the test of reasonableness has hit us. But it's a separate issue and it, it, the discussion then gets away from.
I think that's an option.
Mr. Parent is no longer
Yeah, it's now
Subject of that discussion.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so, I think I've got two, three in favor of not suspending on the thirtieth. Not suspending a policy at our next meeting, but instead maybe considering a vote to recommend and seeing what policy subcommittee comes back with.
I'm actually okay to suspend it, but it's, I kind of threw it out there just to
You also weren't going to have that vote until the thirtieth anyway.
Right.
Yeah.
So, it is still, it still allows you to come back with more information for the whole group to decide.
I know, I just, I know we have a lot of interested parties watching tonight, so I want them to know the timeline or what to expect next. So.
Okay.
Is that what I'm hearing?
I mean, policy can look it up and we can share what we discover on thirtieth. And then from that, we can make that decision then on that night, whether we still want to, how we want to proceed. Either split it or go ahead with both and whatever.
Bill, you good?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. All right, Laura, you're good?
Yeah.
Well, that's giving us more homework.
Thank you so much for coming tonight. Sorry, it feels like we slow everything down. But that's why we have the policies and everything and processes.
That makes sense.
All right, thanks so much for coming tonight.
Thank you guys.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
All right, we will move on to the fall enrollment update. Should be an enrollment document in your packets.
Yes, so this was, so what we've been typically doing is sharing this in September and then October. And in October, you'll see our official October one numbers that we submit to the state. So as you're looking at what you can see on this, as you can see the section breakdowns, you can see the class sizes in the elementary schools. When you look at that, at that document, which I think is helpful. Overall, if we compare this to last year's October one numbers, as a district in the pre K to twelve in district, we are, we, this year, we have fifty-one less students than last year in October at this time. The interesting thing is that the numbers have increased at the academy in the freshman and the sophomore class. But then when you compare that to last year's eighth grade class, the freshman class this year is twenty-two students less than last year's eighth grade class, which is pretty typical. That twenty-two students might go to different places, whether they're going to a technical school or whether they're going to the private school. That number normally, the the change to ninth grade is is normally in that, in that, in that area. But you'll see, there was a, there's less students in the, in the, there's fifty less students in the middle schools. There's, and we have less students in the, in the elementary schools as well, too, even though those class sizes have shifted. One of the things I want to remind people, even just when you look at the the breakdown is we have some large class sizes in every school, they're in different grades, they're in different places. And I don't know if you have any specific questions about it, but that's really just kind of sharing that information with you. And then we'll talk a little bit more about it in October when we have our official numbers. There's usually not a huge change at this stage of the game between now and October. There is normally a pretty decent change in the last week of August and the first week of September. But once we start looking at it in the middle, then we know. And the, and that change often is because we have people who don't show up, who told us they were, and or people who are registering either right as school is starting or even just after school is started because they've moved to the community.
And the the timestamp on this is the fourth? Sorry, I just see.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just for clarification, the copy that I have from the, from our drive, probably the one that was published, has zeros in day school.
We updated it.
It's been updated.
Okay.
Yeah, the actually, the one that's in the packet now has all of the accurate information.
That script may not have, there's a script that runs, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so there's definitely more twenty fours in the elementary than we're used to.
We are not used to seeing twenty fours at all.
Yeah.
And you'll see them in every, you'll see them in all three of the.
No, not a day.
Well, day school, no, they're not, they're, but they're at twenty threes right now. And they did have a twenty four, but then that, that changed. But you will see the, probably the, the concern there being is that you'll see it at Miller in grade two.
Right, coming up.
Is there a reason the one kept stayed at twenty-two, so rather than have them all at twenty-three? I know you probably don't know specifically.
Oh, at Miller, for example? Oh, yeah, sometimes that, some, that that can happen based on just the resources necessary in the classroom, yeah.
Any questions from the committee? Thank you. Next, we're gonna talk about fall building tours. So just for anyone watching, we typically try to do two, sometimes three visits to the schools as a committee. The last couple of years, we've tried to give them a, a topic or a focus. Last year, we did one about the facilities, so we did Abbott and Robinson, but we also did one in the fall.
We did, so now I'm, I'm thinking we did.
We did Westford Academy.
We did.
Oh, we did special education at Westford Academy in the fall last year, and then we did facilities sort of in the winter. And the plan in the spring, you might remember, was to sort of tie our visit to the new E L A curriculum at the elementary level, and it just, with the spring, didn't happen. So that's gonna be the focus for the fall. We've got a couple of dates Courtney's got coordinated with the curriculum coordinators. She's gonna share those and then we'll look for interest based on all seven of us. We try to keep them maybe max three committee members at a time, just so we can be as inconspicuous as possible in an elementary classroom.
And we'll tell, so the dates are the second, October second, October eighth, and October ninth. And we'll also, we'll also make those specific connections of schools. So we were not gonna try to see all six elementary schools in each visit.
Right.
We'll spread them out, the schools, the principals all told us that those would be good days.
Okay.
And this way, the curriculum coordinators can kind of support that. So you'll see in the three to five schools, they are now in year two of that curriculum rollout. And the K to two schools are now in year one of it. So now we'll see it in action in both, at both levels. And so we thought that that would, that would be helpful.
So you can check your personal, there'll be morning visits.
Yeah.
You can check your personal schedules and let me know if those are something you're interested in. And then once we see which buildings are where and what your availability is, we'll try to match it up.
Didn't we use a spreadsheet before?
We can do that.
Just, it was easier for everyone to just go in and fill in, yeah.
And then, and we'll actually, we'll tell you which buildings, because you might want to visit one that you're less familiar with.
Right.
Whatnot, yeah.
Yep. Any other questions on that? Then we'll come back when we sort of have a winter idea or a spring idea for another visit, okay? Superintendent goals. So Dr. Chu is going to present his draft goals. And we will typically discuss them tonight and send any feedback and plan to discuss them again on the thirtieth and vote to approve, vote then.
Great. Yeah, and to add to that, to the superintendent eval committee, hopefully they can get the three of us together between now and our next meeting on the thirtieth, along with Dr. Chu, to discuss these, so.
Dr. Chu, do you want me to share that Google doc, the working document?
It just says one comment on it.
Oh, okay, yeah.
We can share it.
Oh, yeah, no, I didn't know if you wanted me to share, sorry.
Yeah, so people can see it, I thought it'd be helpful.
Okay.
And then, you know, I'll just even resolve that comment. It's a good comment.
It's a really important comment.
It's a good.
I made it, so of course so.
It's the best comment.
But we, it's something.
The greatest comment.
I just didn't know if you wanted, if you had a slide deck or some.
I don't, no, I just made, I just had this document that I shared with you. So you'll see, you know, there's a, you know, a narrative at the beginning, kind of reminding everybody about this process. Specifically, I think the big takeaway is we, 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 I think, you know, regardless of what the outcomes are, this process has gotten better every single year, which I think is great. I think the, the creation of the subcommittee was fantastic and then being able to utilize that every single year, it's helped me. It's, I think it's helped the committee, helped to calibrate and to just talk things through to help, whether it's wordsmithing or even talking about, okay, well, what expectations are, what, what would be helpful for somebody to see to understand, what does that mean?
Yep.
Which I think is great, so that the end of the year, it doesn't become something, it's less daunting.
Right.
You know, which I think is, which I think is great. The, we are following the same process that, that, you know, the Department of Education, Department of Elementary and Secondary Education establishes the educator evaluation system, which we in Westford have adopted and all of our teachers and administrators use. And then they also develop a rubric for building level administrators and district level administrators and superintendents. And specifically, when they talk about the superintendent evaluation, there's an expectation that a superintendent has a student learning goal, just like the teachers, and a professional practice goal, just like the teachers. But then the superintendents are expected to have at least two district improvement goals. And so that's what we've been doing. One of the goals, the fourth goal, is it's a continuation of the equity audit process. And so last year, when we were talking about the goals, the committee agreed to make it a two-year goal. So that goal stayed the same. The other goals all were, were adapted. And so this is the first year that I, that I'm not participating in the new superintendent induction program.
Congratulations on your graduation.
Thank you, thank you. Yeah, we did have a little, they had a little, little party for us, which was nice. The, so this year, and that was normally what my professional practice goal was. And so in looking at it, what, 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 what I wanted to do is figure out, okay, what is something that that we can articulate that would actually help us as a district continue to move forward? And another piece with the goals is, I mean, we have a really strong strategic district improvement plan that a lot of people have worked on. And so, like, we've talked about it, and I shared this with the teachers as well, too. Now that we have a district improvement plan that has very clear objectives, the school improvement plans can be connected to those, so that then the educator goals can be connected to the school improvement plans. The superintendent's goals should be connected to the district improvement plan as well, just like I think the school committee will talk about that as well. And so one of the things that I think has been very successful has been the commitment that that we've shared in getting into the schools on a regular basis. And so one thing that happened a number of years ago was we spent a little bit more time. I remember as a building administrator, when I was a principal, when, when sometimes if if, if someone from central office was visiting, the curriculum coordinators would join us as well, too. And that's something that we haven't necessarily done, that I haven't had them join me outside of other specific visits that we've done. So the goal is to take all of those regular visits that I have with the schools when I do walkthroughs with principals and to actually include curriculum coordinators, so that the curriculum coordinators would, in small groups, join me and the building principal, so that we would do these classroom visits together. We would have a more specific focus and we would talk about engagement and then we would debrief that process, all of us together. As a, as a district team, we've been talking about engagement and we developed a nice Google survey tool that we started using, playing, piloting last year. And we intend to use more, more intentionally this year to kind of look and see, okay, well, what is it that we're seeing in the classroom? What, how are the students engaged? Different, being able to put context into the survey. And so the goal here is that all of the curriculum coordinators will, will participate in at least two of these walkthroughs with me and with one of the principals, so they would be with different principals. And then, and we would be able to have a hundred percent participation by the end of the year. And that would have us, it would give us the, the actual real authentic way of looking at this, because we talk about it in leadership meetings. But now I would be working with them specifically to make sure that these conversations are happening in small groups after we're visiting classes in the building. So that's sort of the, the genesis of where that goal was. I tried to spell out what I thought the key actions would look like and different benchmarks. And then one of the things we talked about last year was articulating what success criteria would look like. Sometimes that's, that's repetitive of something else, but you're just now calling it out as a success criteria. Sometimes it might be verbiage from the, I mean, if it's a, you know, hopefully, we talked about this before, like, if you're developing good SMART goals, then everything's embedded in the goal, you know?
Might be redundant, but it's still good to spell it out, is what we've learned, I think.
That's what we kind of talked about. So you'll see that sometimes I'm open to suggestions clearly and wordsmithing. There's the difference also between the spirit of the goal and whether you have in specific questions about elements of the plan.
Yep.
You know? So that's the first goal. The second goal, from feedback that I had heard from some of the, just members of the committee and even things that were reflected in the evaluation last year, was encouraging me to continue working with the sense of belonging and to continue this work specifically that we started talking about with, with collaborative problem solving and the restorative, the, the community circles work that started last year. And so in looking at this, in looking at the three major things that we're talking about, if you remember, I shared with you the opening day slideshow that I gave to the, that I shared with the staff and talked about, again, letting everybody know where we're at with our implementation of universal design for learning. The fact that we're doing targeted professional development around collaborative problem solving and that we've been doing this work with the community circles in six to twelve. I wanted to capture that in this one goal, to say these three things working together. We're then gonna help. One of the things that I learned as an educator a long time ago was truly the importance of articulating to the students what it is that we're working on, which is why I think the important outcome here is that students will be able to actually understand and exhibit the strategies that are being used, right? So that they'll see that their teachers are working to provide additional choice. The different strategies that we can be talking about, I can, I can list a whole bunch of them. But that's sort of why I was like, the outcome of this, some of that success, you'll see that, that, that each one has its own line, right? So that the U D L principles would be evident when we're communicating student progress. That CPS strategies would be evident when we're communicating student behavior, right? With students and with, with families. And that students in, through grade six through twelve, will be regularly participating in community circles.
Okay.
The way that that kind of, any questions there? For the, number three, for the district improvement plan, last year, this first improvement plan was focused on the master plan. And one of the things we talked about when we shared the master plan with all of you was that there are certain outcomes that will be coming out of this. And one of those things, it will, first of all, it is the work that we're doing with the MSBA. Additionally, we've talked about, there's definitely been some concern in the community as to the, the currentness is all I can think of, but.
Space utilization.
The space utilization aspect, because we did space utilization work previously. The S M M A report didn't specifically talk about space utilization. It did talk about the sizes and it talked about how we're using things. But one of the things we've, we've talked about is working with the principals this year to look at our current usage so that we can actually discuss this and say, okay, how are the buildings currently being used based on what the expectation should be? And so that, along with meeting all the deadlines and the required deliverables for the MSBA
Yep.
process with, with, with the Robinson School, then being able to provide a current space utilization report, which I think a part of that will be looking at redistricting and potential grade level configuration. So the idea being is that as we're looking at how we're using the space, we're also saying, what potential is there?
Okay. That's gonna be really great.
Yeah, so then you, and you'll see kind of the success piece. So I, you know, we'll look for, part of it is creating a working group. So I'm hoping that a member or two members of the committee would be willing to work with, work with me and Jeff Goodwin again as we go and work. We'll follow a similar process, because I think that was really successful, going and meeting with the schools. But another piece is I'm gonna be working and having conversations with the principals, because these other conversations about redistricting, that's gonna need more people looking at it. And when we had the first redistricting conversation six, seven years ago, it was definitely before, it was definitely before COVID and.
It was fall of twenty nineteen or fall of twenty eighteen.
Okay, okay, all right, okay.
Was that, there was that working group initially?
Yes, and I was on that working group.
Okay.
So that's why I'm like, I, I remember doing this with other administrators.
Yeah.
And we worked closely with the town G I S of information, which I think that's why some of that data, at least the idea of it, the methodology of it still exists. Now, of course, we need our actual, where do people live right now?
Yep.
So that, that'll be part of that work. And I'm hoping that we can then have a deliverable to share as to what we think. Some of it will be informing the MSBA process, some of it will be saying, okay, well, this needs to be outside of the MSBA process. This is something that we could just look at doing right now. It would be, I think we'd be tying in the start, the school start times conversation to part of that.
Yep.
That might be worth looking at like a winter or spring building tour, because obviously, if, if you do find that as that working group is coming up, that might be more, have to get more eyes on.
Yep.
Whatever you find.
My only comment on that goal is the, so the by June twenty twenty-five, I understand fulfillment goal, but certainly having a fair amount of work towards that space, space utilization before we get to the hard. before we get to the heart of budget because it's, it was raised so much.
Yeah.
Last year. It's almost undeniable that it's gonna be raised again this year. And having at least some progress.
Yeah.
Will be key, I think, to show that we're committed to, to that work.
Yeah.
Forgive me though on this one thing, I'm nearly sure I remember in one of our SMA meetings, they did sit down, I don't know if they, I can't remember if they actually put it in the report, but I'm nearly sure they said that we were using the space that we had and that they weren't necessarily, so there was some aspect of space utilization.
It is, there is some data there, yes.
Yeah.
And that's with the lens of educational adequacy.
Yeah.
And which is the, the SMMA lens.
Yeah.
Right? It's not maybe the taxpayer lens.
Gotcha.
To be blunt.
Okay.
So then the final goal is the equity audit piece. There was a recommendation to maybe update the goal to talk about the, to include more specifically this year versus last year because like one of the key actions is identify independent providers who work specifically, well, we've already kind of done all that. My thought from that is maybe just adding to the key actions, the more specific things that are happening. I don't know if I want to take away things as part of it because it, it is really encompassing the whole arc of the goal, but I can look at that.
I just think it's, it's worth updating some, like, I mean, you've already looked, you know.
Right.
Looked at the independent, we picked those, so I think it makes sense.
That's what I'm thinking, I might just add to it as opposed to removing it.
Or just a tick or something to show.
Saying that it's completely.
Yeah, yeah.
Like a strike through?
A strike through or, or, you know.
I think it does look like nothing has happened.
Yeah.
Okay.
And that's not helped that.
Okay.
Yeah.
So this is the one that was converted to a two-year.
Yeah.
Goals. So I think having some indication that it was completed in year one.
Yeah.
Yeah, or either, not, maybe not, a strike through or at the end saying like, you know, dash completed.
Or a June 2024 goal or something like to show that it was.
I'll, I'll, I'll look at it.
I just wonder, we've got our Director of Equity Curriculum and Instruction title in there as well, I just think it should.
Yeah.
And the superintendent evaluation subcommittee can get, have a deeper discussion about that or get into the weeds about that, too.
The, so then the, the other part of this is identifying the indicators within the standards that we'll focus on through the evaluation process. And so I updated three of the four of them. The second standard involves management and operations. And knowing that we're still going to have a significant amount of budget work this year, I felt like it made sense to still keep that as the, the indicator there. The adjustment, so in the first standard, talking about, I think that the instruction piece, when you look at ensuring the instructional practices in all settings reflect high expectations regarding content, quality of effort, engage all students and are personalized to accommodate diverse learning styles, needs and interest, levels of readiness, that really supports the, the UDL work. It supports goals one and two, you know, the idea of we're looking at, there's, there's a specific instructional goal here, which I think is, is, is really important for us to have because the other thing is we want to make sure that we're modeling instructional leadership.
Yep.
Number three, the family and community engagement. While the indicator is kind of short in compared to the others, I think it says a lot, addressing family concerns in an equitable, effective and efficient, inefficient manner. That can mean a lot of different things, but I know that, you know, one of the things that came up last year was, you know, were, were we responding in a timely manner or in a way in which people felt we should regarding some large decisions?
Yep.
I will say, I think, I do think we do a great job communicating, but I think having that in there to make sure that we're really looking at that, I think is, is fair. When you look at the, the rubric, which is, the rubric is linked here, too, you can see that there's some more language that talks about it. One thing that I, I do kind of think is important, not that you wouldn't understand this because I think you would all understand this, but maybe the general public, addressing family concerns in an equitable, effective and efficient manner doesn't mean people always get the answer that they want, right?
Yep.
That's not what it means. Because I'm like, I think I wouldn't, we would never be able to do that if, if people interpret that to mean that you make everybody happy.
Right.
But that's okay. And then the fourth one, I added the cultural proficiency piece. I think this is gonna, I think we, we have been addressing this as a district, but I think this really is supporting the equity work that we're doing. And I feel like that was a, that was a, a, a good indicator to bring in that we haven't looked at yet.
Sure. Those look great. So if you're on the superintendent evaluation subcommittee, that's your venue for discussion and for feedback. If you're not, please send me any feedback and I will compile it and share with Dr. Chu ahead of time, or it will be back on the agenda for discussion and a vote on the 30th.
So we shouldn't be making any comments or suggestions?
No, we can, sure. Yeah. Any, anybody have thoughts? I just wanted to lay out the process.
I, just as it kind of popped through my head and actually it kind of connects in as well with one of the standards and that came out last year's, after last year's evaluation. You know, we're talking about UDL and, and the CPS and the community circles. One of the things I thought that could be helpful as part of this goal in terms of key actions and criteria is how are we communicating that information to parents and families? You know, should we look at our district website? Because I know we have, you know, a lot of the, you know, we're areas where you can find information on, you know, curriculum and stuff is maybe we should be adding pages that specifically talk about UDL.
Sure.
What CPS is, you know, is more than just going out and, you know, the principal newsletters and just a place for families to really kind of connect and engage and maybe do some of their own research. Also, if some of those families need to be able to use like Google Translate, you know, that could be helpful.
Put it on the website.
Putting it on the web.
Build some of that in.
Build, yeah.
Yep.
So I kind of thought that might be helpful. And the one other thing I thought might be helpful is if we could potentially look at some sort of broad draft timeline of kind of the MSBA process, the master plan, the space utilization. Because I feel there's a few things going on and it's to kind of give us an idea of where we are along the way.
I think I, I hear you. I think, I think that is, I've heard that from the community. I think some of that is hard to put down until we sort of see the data. But I think that could be part of the, along with the working group to say, we, we're gonna look at this.
Yeah.
And almost like the start times, right? We don't know what the recommendation will be, but we agree to sort of report out on redistricting.
But even, when is the recommendation due?
Right.
I've seen some, well, so we do have that full timeline, so we have, we actually have all of those, because it is, there's very specific timelines that the MSB has given us that we can, I think, share. Some of it is, gets into the weeds a little bit that might be confusing, but I think we can still look at that. One of the things that I've seen other districts do, which I thought was successful, and I'm trying to figure out how we might best be able to do it, is, is to create a dedicated page to these projects. And again, similar to what you're saying, that we can post information. Just even having, there, there, there's an infographic that I shared with all you that we've shared in other places that just shows, this is the five to seven year timeline. This is this phase and it goes here to here. And like those types of things could exist there for somebody to just kind of review.
Yeah. Because also, you know, the MSBA is kind of separate to the space utilization, but, you know, they're all obviously coexisting.
Yeah.
So I think it might be just a, just some thoughts.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any last questions on that?
Oh, okay. One last thing. Should we consider, and I, I'll say the same for school committee, you know, we have the ESTIP, would it make sense to kind of consider adding the references? And that's maybe for the committee to discuss, you know, when you're hitting, obviously UDL and stuff, it's part of our ESTIP, you know, adding those reference numbers that we have.
Yeah. We've gotten away from that on agendas, too.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. Great. The next item of business is school committee goals. I had sent you all my proposed goals in sort of shorthand and then worked to try to get them into a long form version. These would, these are up for discussion, they're up for everything, feedback, editing, wordsmithing, you name it. So you, you will see some TBDs because. I applaud you and I think forming success criteria words is challenging.
Right.
Like I feel like you can, I can talk about what I think they are, but it's a little challenging. And, sorry, yeah, just click, oh, I can't. Okay. So these shouldn't, the overarching goal shouldn't sound new to you, but, to the committee, but they're again up for discussion tonight. So the first goal, I was really trying to capture, and this will be familiar from our executive session tonight, but for those of the public, we are very behind on releasing executive session minutes. Those are minutes that, that are covered by confidentiality reasons and then that reason for confidentiality expires. So if we're talking about like a contract that we're negotiating and then that contract is settled, those minutes would, would be released. It's just a processes thing that we have gotten behind and I'd like to make that a goal this year to get back up to date or make progress towards. I've also talked with Kathy about updating some of our school committee page. There's a little bit of redundancy, there's some old resolutions. I think, for example, like the press box, it should be easier to find things that are, you know, new and for, of interest as well as, you know, a link to the budget stuff. And then once we get a building page, there should be a way to find the building page, the building projects page from our school committee page. So those were the two things I was thinking about as far as like internal systems that would make us a better functioning committee. Any feedback? The second goal is one we've talked about here and there, a review of financial policies, fiscal policies. As I mentioned, the finance subcommittee is leading the draft revolving fund, the revolving fund guidelines and practices. So that's one of the clearest action items, but there are a couple that got put on the back burner for the policy subcommittee that are just minor updates with the position title for Director of, I'm sorry, I'm blanking, Director of School Finance. It used to be called something different, updating some of those kind of things up, up in that bucket of fiscal policies. And the third goal I'm proposing is similar to one of Dr. Chu's, which is our committee work to support the master plan work for this year. So some of that is very obvious with the start time committee, sub, start time subcommittee. As part of our spring delegation of roles, I was added to the Robinson Building Committee and for the MSBA process. And then it speaks right to Dr. Chu's recent discussion about the utilization. So, yep. So I'm still wordsmithing, in progress. I have, I'm working on the success criteria, it's, but open to feedback discussion or you can mull it over and email me. And then ideally they'd come back to the committee on the 30th for a vote.
I do think it's worth noting for people at home that when we had our retreat during the summer, we did speak about goals like, so this is, this has come from.
Sorry. It's not just, I put them down on paper.
It's not just you being like, this is what I want.
Yes. No. I put them down on paper because we didn't, we didn't like articulate them.
We didn't create a document that day, but we did spend time at the retreat, kind of really reviewing everything and like how the year had gone and kind of where we wanted. This is very much the committees.
I hope in line, yes.
Yeah. You just put it on paper.
Yes. Everybody's looking down reading, so I just want to give you a minute or, I feel like a teacher, you make eye contact when you're ready to move on.
No, I just like how we're kind of keeping them succinct and, you know, I think, Dr. Chu, you kind of set the standard with the ESTIP plan being two pages. And I, I just think it makes sense that rather than trying to create these very narrative long, so I like that we're keeping them quite short and concise.
It could be wise for the committee, much like, excuse me, dropping my pen here.
Don't attack your others.
Much like Dr. Chu mentioned previously with his goals, that, that educator objective, right? You know, you put it up on the wall, this is what you want to see students do. Similarly, I think we, as a committee, over the next couple of weeks, think about what are those success criteria for meeting these things, you know? Get back to Valerie on.
What does it look like?
What would it look like for us individually?
Right.
Right? Hitting those goals.
Yeah.
And I think from all of our different subcommittees and our areas and domains, so.
I think one of the MASC workshops we did highlighted that part of the evaluation, which is the success criteria is really like, how will the district look different if, if I execute all of these actions? And I guess I was just low on caffeine that day and putting some text in there, but. Okay. Great. Thank you. And now we'll like welcome Jenny Lin, Director of School Finance, to present a financial report on fiscal year 2024. With updates on the operating budget and non-general revenue. Thanks Jenny.
Final reports. There's a fire for the PowerPoint slides. There's also a report. So if you can pull up the PowerPoint slide, that'd be great.
Is that our projector? Yeah, that's gotta be the projector.
It's a little grainy and.
All of a sudden.
Too light.
Yeah. All right. We'll look at that.
Thanks Jenny.
Usually the text will be pretty bright.
Yeah.
It's very bright.
I know, it's a great, and it's like.
Is it hitting you?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm glad Sean said something, too.
It's a little air shock.
Come join the corner.
Come, come be with us in the corner.
We should have that twirl goes to move this forward a little bit.
Yeah. Yeah. That's all up for grabs, too. Part of our internal systems.
Yeah.
Go ahead Jenny, thank you.
Okay. Thank you for having me. I will provide you fiscal year 24, quarter four financial status report. The first slide is a snapshot for general fund status. For fiscal year 24, annual town meeting appropriated $65,889,564 for the annual budget. By the end of fiscal year 24, the entire general fund's operating budget was fully suspended. And with $200,000 transfer approved by the school committee, transfer from general fund to special education reserve fund. In addition to that, we employ the same strategy as in fiscal year 23 to prepay $260,000 for a portion of fiscal year 25's special education collaborative tuition. So next slide, this chart gives you a summary for general fund's operating budget by individual function call. So you can see here, from the last slide, we had a transfer to, from general fund to special education reserve fund for $200,000. And also we see under function call, 3,000 other school services, we had an overage about $173,000. That's primarily due to the transportation costs. I will provide more details in the upcoming slides for that function call. So after we review the whole picture, that's moved to next slide. I will cover the general fund salary and general fund expenditure. Let me start by focusing on the non-facility department salary. This is a recap of large budget expenditure in this chart. A couple highlighted variants I will discuss here. The first category includes teacher, teacher specialist and instructional coordinator. For teacher salary, we had a remaining balance of $174,000. While the substitute salary had a deficit around $20,000. This is a very unusual year because we experienced a significant increase from the leave of absence request, leading to the higher expenditure in the substitute salary line and lower the expenditure for teacher salary lines. Even we anticipate. the expenditure for teacher salary lines. Even, we anticipate a certain number of leaves every single year, we must budget for our employee in case nobody requests one. At the beginning of fiscal year 24, we had one curriculum coordinator resign from the position, so that position was not filled. And during fiscal year 24, we have four individual teachers took a significant time off. And so these leaves were not anticipated at the planning stage for fiscal year 24's budget. And that's why you see the remaining balance, because it's really difficult for us to anticipate or project. So who will take a family medical leave, or who will have, like, a health-related leave of absence? So the remaining balance in teacher salary line was used to cover the 14% increase from the special education tuition, and also other underfunded, like, facility needs. So the second area I'm going to talk about is teacher assistance. As you can observe here, we had a deficit about $81,000 for teacher assistance. So within the middle column, actual expenditure, $4.1 million. We pay $193,000 for the retroactive payment for fiscal year 23's contract obligation following the two years, Unit E mediation process. So for Unit E, we settled the contract through fiscal year 25. So we made adjustment to add one step for Unit E contract, and also increasing the salary for Unit E member to, step A, to over $30,000. So these adjustments aims to retain Unit E members with competitive pay. So hopefully, we can see some, you know, less turnover rate for the Unit E members in these areas. And the last category we will look is library and media center. So for that function, we also see a deficit around $25,000. This category includes the salary for librarian and also library aides, because library aides, they are also Unit E members. So we retroactive pay the salary for library aides in this category. That's why we see a deficit over here. Next slide, let's continue on general fund salaries. We will discuss about facility department salary. For fiscal year 24, the entire custodial salary was budgeted for one, for $1.9 million. The actual expenditure was $2,089,000, resulting a deficit of $115,000. So the underfunded area contributing to this deficit includes custodial salaries, custodians' overtime costs, and the snow and ice removal overtimes. If we compare fiscal year 23's data on the bottom with fiscal year 24's data, you see the total deficit for facility department area increased from $40,000 to $115,000. So that's about $75,000 increase in the deficit. Something I would like to know here, if you see custodial subs line, we had a remaining balance around $20,000. Hiring custodian subs during the school year has always been challenging because their work schedule during nighttime and weekend. So facility department need to consider how to better utilize custodian sub to help us to reduce the overtime cost. So recently, they hired two custodian subs. So we are hoping to see, you know, we can spend less in fiscal year 21, 25 for the overtime. And so this is on the facility department salary. Moving to next slide, we will-
Do you mind? So, last year, it didn't snow very much. And so my question is, is that line, like, underbudgeted if we got a lot more snow this year? Like, is, I don't know the answer to that.
So, so part of it is the timing of the storms? And so, there's, like, I don't remember specifically last year, but, for example, I, I do remember, like, if they're trying to clean us out on a Sunday so that we can go in on Monday, you're right, it's not as, it might not be as much, but it's costing us more. And so that was one of the things I needed to start looking at last year, was, okay, well, wait a second, if, if, you know, is one storm more expensive than another? Jeff Goodwin would have the answer for us, but I remember him specifically telling me that some of the, some of the decisions that, that we made, that one thing cost us more than something else.
No, I appreciate that. I just didn't understand that, because-
No, you're right. It was a mild, in, in theory, it was mild.
Yeah, because if we have a really bad winter this year, and if we haven't-
I don't think historically, we, I, I don't think it's been historically underfunded, which is kind of what you asked.
Yeah. I don't, I'm not judging, I just was asking.
Yeah.
And in, in some cases, a lot of little storms or flash freeze-
Yeah.
Costs more than one big storm, anyway, because-
Well, and it's one of the-
Guaranteed hours, or whatever.
Right, it's one of the things that we had talked about, even in terms of the delays. Bringing in the custodians early to try to get school open costs more money than canceling school and letting them work their regular hours to do something.
That's a very interesting piece of information.
Yeah.
Because there's a lot of folks asking about why certain decisions are made, and I think that there's-
And I, I will say, I've never, I, I can honestly say that I never made the decision based on the finances before, but it was something that came up in, like, the mid-winter when Jeff and I were talking about how expensive something was. And then I'm like, okay, well, wait a second, now, you know, when we're talking about, I mean, just understanding to be able to communicate, what does that mean to people, you know?
It's essentially like you're paying for overtime if it's outside of those-
Knowing that it has an impact on families as well, too, right? Like, that could have, it could have a financial impact on families. Just being able to communicate that, I think, would be, you're right, it's something that we've never discussed.
And then, you know, articulating a clear plan to get custodial subs in will, should reduce that overtime, you know?
The overtime, yeah, the snow, the storms, it's not necessarily going to help with the storms, because we, we do just use our staff for the, for the storms. The overtime issue that Jenny was talking about there was that we didn't have subs. So, you know, one custodian from one building is volunteering, not, I mean, not volunteering, but they're signing up to go ahead and do the overtime at another building, or they stay at their building. We actually had one head custodian that was doing, like, the full shift because he didn't have his crew there. And so then we were, you know, trying to make sure that, okay, we wanted to work with him so that he was still able to get his time, yeah.
We most, we can't be the only district having, like, this issue with, you know, trying to get, you know, a strong custodian base, you know, is just curious-
We have a strong custodial base, because that's one thing I want to say. I think our, I think our team is great. But the sub piece-
Yeah.
I think that's difficult.
Getting support, it's just getting support for them.
Right, so that when they're, you know, and, and on, when it's just a, when it's not a big, like, if it's, I don't want to say if it's not a big deal. We've had, we've had some custodians that have also gone out on leaves, which is a longer period of time, which, which actually becomes even more challenging than somebody who's able to cover a shift, you could say.
Do you, I, do you think, I'm just looking at, we, so FY '23 and FY '24, we both went into the red. I can't remember what we budgeted for, for FY '25. Is it keeping in mind where we ended up?
So, for the salary part, we did not actually increase a lot. We just increased based on the percentage on the-
Contract.
Yeah.
Contractual language, so the percentage increase. So that overtime portion, that's hard to anticipate how much we're going to spend every year.
Yeah.
And, and we just know that even across the board, we have underfunded facilities.
Yeah.
That's just been something we've never been able to really sufficiently, so when you talk about, there's even the snow removal and things, we have that in our, in our budget, but the other, the other work that we need to be doing, we haven't been able to fund.
Go ahead, Jenny, thanks.
Okay. So, this slide, we will discuss about general fund's expenditure. And I will also discuss a couple major function calls. The first one is transportation function call 3300. At the beginning, I mentioned about 3,000 function call, we had an overage. That's primarily due to the transportation costs. By the end of June, fiscal year 24, the deficit was $151,000. This deficit was primarily driven by three different factors. The first factor, because we experienced higher-than-expected special education transportation cost and the vehicle maintenance in fiscal year 24, with outsourcing the special education fee. So we anticipate we will see some saving in this area. On the second factor, because we invested around $40,000 for TransFinder software, that's something we will look into if that software can help us to optimize the bus route. Hopefully, we can see some efficiency in the future. The last reason is fuel cost, because fuel cost play an important role. Fiscal year 24's fuel market was similar level as fiscal year 23. In fiscal year 23, we received about $180,000 from Apple Fund, one-time support for the transportation. So without the supplemental funding in fiscal year 24, the transportation budget exceeded the budgeted amount. The good news is, we negotiated the bus contract to make the change of the fuel escalation cost in our favor. In the past, the bus, the fuel cost threshold was, was $3.17 per diesel gallon. Now, the threshold has been increased to $4.39 per diesel gallon. So that means if fiscal year 25's fuels market doesn't go above that price range, we do not need to pay any fuel escalation cost. So hopefully, the market will remain at the same range as fiscal year 24, so we can save on the fuel costs.
Thank you. Jenny, can I ask one question to clarify, and forgive me for, if I'm misunderstanding this? The TransFinder software, when we looked at spending that money, my understanding was it was from school choice funds being a one-time cost. So when it's showing up in here as, at the end of Q4, as a deficit-
It's still getting paid for, and it's getting paid for through school choice, but it's, but she budgeted, I mean, she accounted for it in the, in the appropriate, which is why, because we're paying all of our bills, so when we're showing it's a deficit-
Yeah.
It's, it's still getting paid?
Yeah.
And so, is that correct?
Yes.
So it still has to show up essentially in our operation?
And she, she put it in the transportation line items, though we know that that's the appropriate expenditure.
Yeah.
But we know that it's being, that it's being paid for.
Because we did a budget for this $40,000, but we still count this as a transportation cost.
Yeah.
That's a good question.
Okay.
Thank you, Maddie.
So, next slide, please, and-
Sorry, Jenny.
So we will talk about facility departments. Expaniture cover the function call 4110 through function call 4230. As we previously discussed, facility area is always underfunded. And so if you look at the bottom of this chart, the combined total deficit for facility area is about $300,000. So the persistent underfunding for the facility includes, like, custodial services, heating of the building, maintenance of the grounds, and maintenance of the building. So, but you can see for utility service, we have a positive ending balance, $306,000, because solar credit help us to alleviate the pressure from the utility cost. So the combined deficit for this area was managed by reallocating general fund's operating budget remaining from, like, teacher salary lines to cover this deficit. Move to next slide, continue for general fund's expenditure, special education tuition expenditure from function call 9100 through 9400. We know special education tuition continue to significantly impact our general fund's operating budget. We have multiple funding sources to support special education tuition. The chart below gives you the breakdown, how much we pay from each funding sources. Something to know here, for Circuit Breaker, we received $250,000 more in fiscal year 24 compared to fiscal year 23. And for fiscal year 24, the special education tuition was originally budgeted for $5.6 million. The actual expenditure was $6.5 million, so resulting a difference for $907,000. And that's particularly due to the 14% increase from the special education private tuition cost. So the deficit was observed by Circuit Breaker, Grand 240, School Choice, and also general fund's remaining balance. So this slide wrap up in the general fund's operating budget. That's just jumping to next slide for our non-general fund and special revenue funds. The first one is our Fund 220, full services. At the end of fiscal year 24, on the full service revolving account had a balance $1.8 million, reflecting a very healthy and robust financial position. According to DASI recommendation and, and also requirement, so we need to maintain three months' equivalent of the operating cost in our fund balance. That's approximately $900,000. And because the full service contract still in negotiation, we still haven't finalized on the contract yet. So our goal is to provide competitive pay for our full service staff. And so the anticipated full service salary and longevity increase will reduce the full service revolving accounts balance in next three fiscal years. Next one is our federal and state grants, Fund 255 and Fund 265. If you look into the quarter fours reconciled report, you might notice for our federal and state grant, we have some negative fund balance, which is pretty typical, because the federal grant, state grant account, they are recorded on cash basis. So if we have spent, incur, the expenditure incurred in last quarter of fiscal year 24, the reimbursement doesn't come in until the beginning of fiscal year 25. So negative balance, they are okay, they are very typical. So we continue to monitor the fund balance here. So I will highlight a couple grants here. The first one is S3 funding. The total amount is a little bit over half million dollars. We have fully utilized the funding in fiscal year 23 and 24 to support the full, the free four-day kindergarten program. This grant has been closed out in fiscal year 24. And for our special education grant, we receive around $900,000 for Grand 240, and around $23,000 for Grand 262. And we utilize $100,000 state grant to build an NAC playground.
So, so that's still in progress. And so that $100,000, just, if anybody's reading that, the $100,000 was actually utilized in the design phase of it, but it was expended already.
Yes.
And it was for the playground project, but it, it hasn't actually been completely installed, as of yet, that's going on right now.
Right.
And was also funded from community preservation.
Yes, the remaining will be funded by the town CPA fund.
Yeah, thank you.
Next slide is our revolving accounts, Fund 285. This is a summary of major revolving account revenue and expenditure level for fiscal year 24. If you take a brief review for these major accounts, like for integrated preschool, we spend $288,000 and receive $295,000 for, like, a grade three to five instructional, instructional music fee. We incur $124,000 and receive $144,000 for athletic revolving, the total spending- for athletic revolving, the total spending is seven hundred thirty-two thousand. Uh, we brought in seven hundred thirty thousand in revenue. For transportation, there's, uh, six hundred thirty-three thousand in expenditure and for the revenue, that was six hundred forty-seven thousand. So from this set of data, so you can tell, we can observe, um, the expenditure level closely lined up with the revenue level. So that indicates, we fully utilize the revolving account to help us to offset the general funds operating budget. So I'm gonna talk about a couple major revolving accounts in more detail in next slide. The first one is school building usage.
Rebecca, on that last slide, so for those of us, for those folks watching at home, right? Who see that there's a surplus in some of those accounts, are there, there's rules as to what that, that can be used for, right?
Yes, that's something finance subcommittee is working on. Trying to, you know, write a policy and to, you know, figure, figure out what's the best, like a fund balance we should reserve in those accounts.
Okay, because it can only be used in, in the category that it is, right?
Some of them have very specific things. Some of them, uh, it's not as specific and it would be based on local expectations. But, um, that's one of the things that the policy subcommittee is talking about.
The document that I was talking about, yeah.
Finance.
Right, so on the first one, we will look into is school building usage. For fiscal year twenty-four, um, fiscal year twenty-four marks as the third year we utilize the school building rental account. Uh, for fiscal year twenty-four, the total revenue received was a hundred twenty-four thousand and we incur expenditure eighty-six thousand, so resulting a positive cash flow for thirty-eight thousand dollars. So compared to fiscal year twenty-three, the nine thousand cash flow. So the cash flow increased about thirty thousand for this fiscal year, for last fiscal year. And we do see, uh, healthy and stable and sustained growth for this account. So hopefully, in the future, we can use more from this revolving account to help us to offset the general funds underfunded facility areas. So there's some growth potential for this account. Uh, the second one is integrated preschool revolving account. The current ending balance, uh, for fiscal year twenty-four was three hundred fifty-seven. Uh, the expenditure level two hundred eighty-eight thousand closely matching the revenue level two hundred ninety-five thousand. So our goal is gradually spend down this revolving account through a safe and sustainable increase in the offset, because we cannot just spend more than we receive in a fiscal year, which will be not responsible. And the last one is.
Jenny, can I just add something there? One of the other things too that we've talked about in finance subcommittee is that, uh, an account like this is almost tied to the master plan work. Because if we see that there is a world in which we want Christopher Lee to be K to five, we might need to make some preschool accommodations for our littlest learners and having a balance in something like this would be helpful. So we, we acknowledge that when there's a balance, obviously, we do want to make, um, an effort in that regard, but we're trying to have a holistic look too, to see, wait, would that come in handy in two years, so?
And also the sustainable plan of how to bring the numbers back in alignment.
Yes.
If one account is, if we determine it to be overfunded, we don't want to just take it one year, because then that's a, that's a cliff built in. So we'll, we'll be talking about that as well.
Exactly, yep.
So that's why we increase around sixty thousand in fiscal year twenty-five's offset. So we don't want to use like a whole thing in one fiscal year, which is not responsible. And the last one is regular four-day kindergarten revolving account. The remaining balance for fiscal year twenty-four is ninety-one thousand. This whole balance will be used up by, by the end of fiscal year twenty-five to cover the cost for free four-day kindergarten program. Uh, next slide is our special revenue fund, uh, fund two ninety-five. For special education reserve fund, with the two hundred thousand transferred in from general funds operating budget, we currently have seven hundred twenty-eight thousand fund balance in special education reserve. This is crucial, because due to the unpredictable nature of our special education tuition, so it's very important to keep a buffer there, just in case of, uh, a potential challenge for the future fiscal year. Uh, next slide, uh, we will, um, talk about school choice and circuit breaker. For school choice, fiscal year twenty-four's total revenue was, uh, over half million dollars, while the expenditure was nine hundred forty-one thousand. And so we spend, uh, down the school choice from, uh, fiscal year twenty-three's ending balance, one point six million, to, uh, fiscal year twenty-four's ending, one point two million. Now, four hundred thousand dollars was spent on the EL curriculum and also on a fourteen percent increase from the special education tuition. Uh, and the last one is circuit breaker. The ending balance for circuit breaker was two point four million, which will be available for fiscal year twenty-five's out of district tuition expense. So this slide wrap up my presentation and, uh, I want to use this opportunity to express my gratitude for our dedicated finance team. Uh, we have lots of staff. They really work over, uh, above and beyond. And they work like nighttime and weekend, so we successfully closed the fiscal year by the end of July. And I really want to thank you for their teamwork, for helping us to achieve the goal. And if you have any questions for the Q four report, I'm happy to answer. Any other questions?
Thanks, Jenny.
Thanks, Jenny.
Thank you.
Thorough.
Your presentations are always super thorough.
Well articulated too.
Yeah.
Makes it so.
She really answers the questions before.
Before you ask.
You know, stick some of the fun out of it for me, to be honest. It's great. It's really, it really is.
Prepare very thoroughly and you have a very clear presentation style. And you make things that are very complicated very straightforward for anyone who's like in the audience. And it's a tough job, so thank you very much for doing it.
Thank you.
Are there any questions or reflections, reactions?
Only, um, reflection comment that I would have is back to the facilities maintenance. If we're historically underbudgeted, I, I would hope that we can try to reflect that appropriately.
Yeah, but it comes from somewhere.
We have to reduce it every single year.
I know, it is, it is a shell game, uh, but it's.
I mean, even in, even in the description, it says that area is increased six percent. And so if we're getting two percent as a town appropriation.
Right, um, it's just.
Welcome to the team.
Oh, no, trust me, I, I know, I, I work with municipal finance all the time and the shell game really is, it's real, um, but I, I just think that.
I think we should be careful about the words we're using though, too.
Right, yes.
No, I, I know, it's not really a shell game. No, it's, it's, we pay our bills, right? But it's reflecting what the community actually needs.
What's, what's happened though historically is that we've had to put everything on hold until we know what we might have. And then we're able, like, we, we had teachers who took leaves, that then we didn't have to use their salaries, so then we're able to do something facilities. And, and that's why we have to always reduce it, because we know we have to pay the salaries first. But your, your point is well taken, but that, I think it's just been a challenge that I know the district was seeing before I became superintendent. In the four years that we've been doing this, we've been talking about that and, and, you know, it just, it, it's a different, something else comes up each year that then you say, well, okay, I can't necessarily dedicate those funds to that.
Right, and I, I thought it was interesting, I thought Jenny did a great job explaining sort of the, the, um, underspending, underutilization of the teachers because of tying it to leave of absence. But also I think that that's a helpful piece of the narrative for when we didn't draw down a school choice account as much as we had maybe thought about during, and talked about during a budget season, because it turned out we had.
Right.
A leave of absence that we didn't account for, and so there's, you know, funds available.
Yeah, and you, you articulated that with, we had, we anticipated that we, we knew that we were gonna have the increase in special education costs. And so we knew that for one year, we would be able to use school choice money to do that.
Right.
We didn't need to use the amount of school choice money that we had projected, because we then had access to.
It's not for lack of trying.
Right, right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Last is a personnel update.
It's pretty standard. We've got people that are continuing to coming and going. And thankfully, our teaching staff is, is staffed. We did hire, um, our seventh grade ELA teacher at Landry School. We were able to hire a school psychologist, position that was open. And as of next Monday, our roots program will be fully up and running. So we had a job coach that started this week. We have another one that's starting in next week.
Awesome.
Yep.
Can I just ask one question in public that I've asked about, uh, the, um, music teacher position at Abbott, basically an update of where we are in hiring on that, um, if possible. Uh, because I'm, I'm assuming that program should be starting up soon typically, so.
Yep, so we've posted the position. We did post it as an interim position, um, because we're looking to see if there might be ways that we could reschedule and rethink, um, the way in which we provide the services next year that might allow, might make it a more attractive position, because the part-time aspect of it makes it difficult. Um, we've interviewed a number of candidates. Uh, there, there was an offer that was made and there was a previous offer that was made. I mean, the problem being is that there's, sometimes it's a salary, right? And so that becomes a, we, we acknowledge that the, the part-time aspect of it is a challenge.
So I guess I just want to make sure that the, the kids have access to that program this year.
Yeah.
Is it still the Abbott Christopher Lee day position, a point six position, three days?
Yep.
Are you thinking of coming back, Laurie?
No. I wonder, I know, I know that there have been a few different band teachers in the last few years. And as you said, it'd be great if we could make it more attractive.
Thank you. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Seconded.
All in favor?